Good morning, Michael.
Good morning. How are you today?
Not so good.
Yes.
Before you speak,
Yes, sir.
I want to make it clear that, you know, you're here and your ability to speak is at my discretion. You did not register like everybody else.
I totally understand.
We offer you this opportunity because, you know, we believe that you're an important constituency to the process of Chicago Board of Education, Chicago Public Schools. And so, we think it's appropriate and civil to allow you to be here. Unfortunately, your organization does not seem to want to behave as civilly as we do. Your Vice President is quoted in the Chicago Tribune as "We're coming after you", directed at the Board of Education, at these Board members up here. "We're coming after you", threatening us. "Your organization continues to spew lies about us", particularly Ms. Pritzker. "You keep saying that she or Hyatt Hotels received TIF funds. Neither she nor Hyatt Hotels has received any TIF funds. You really should stop lying. What kind of example are you setting for our children?" "You also threaten us. You had your members march on my home. Of course, nobody was home except my daughter, who wasn't in school because you were on strike. She was sufficiently concerned that she felt like she had to make a phone call. This is not civil behavior on the part of your organization. You really should not set this example for our children. You shouldn't be threatening people. You shouldn't be lying about Board members. You shouldn't be trying to intimidate people. So, I really do hope, if you want to continue to have us act civilly to you, that you would act civilly to us. Now, I'll offer you your two minutes."
I appreciate your gracious and civil behavior. Once again, good morning. I'm the peacemaker, so I'm here to speak peace. Today, we're going to approve an amended budget, and it's amended to include an unanticipated cost of over $100,000 of the successor agreement of Chicago Teachers Union. At the same time, we have something that has become a bit of a yearly ritual, and that is the specter of the school closings. But whereas the catchphrase in the past has been "academic achievement", we're now hearing about underutilization and building utilization. And at one of the recent community hearings, I pointed out the incongruity of talking about rightsizing based on space utilization after eliminating the Demographics and Planning Department from CPS. And of course, I was reassured that all was well. Demographics and Planning has now been folded under the Portfolio Office. By the way, where's Mr. Seacott? I haven't seen him in a while. But anyway, I see that it's listed under Portfolio, and I also see that the budget for the department has been zeroed out, and the head of that department has been moved to Business Management. I see that it's been folded with new schools and military programs. So, this is an area of concern. You know, one way that we try to understand things is to look at a map, and when we look at these underutilized schools, we see that they're surrounded by charters that are draining the traditional schools of students. So, at the same time we hear about underutilized schools, we also hear talk of building more charters, which sounds about as contradictory as eliminating the-
Excuse me, Mr. Brunson.
Okay.
Excuse me. Can you please conclude? Thank you.
That department. This is like waving a red flag attached to a ringing alarm that is tied to a dead canary. Something's wrong. And that's why you have so much unrest out here in the streets. People are upset about what's going on. Like I said, I'm here for peace. I'm here to offer an olive leaf. So, I have like four suggestions. Just let me put them out there. Number one, you say these charter schools are public schools. Prove they're public schools. Post their position files and their budgets online so we can see what the employees are being paid. We can see what the budget breakdown is. Number two, you have a problem with the pensions. Enroll everyone that teaches in a charter in the Chicago Teachers Pension Fund to broaden the contribution base. Number three, we need stability. Facilitate the charter employee's ability to be stable by allowing them to have a collective bargaining agreement. Don't shut them down as soon as they vote to have a union. And then finally, I beg that you take the luxury of a delay in closing these traditional schools and opening up the charters. Before you do all of that, before you take all these actions, I suggest that we take a study, because this has been going on for quite a while now, and we need to really do a study to see what the impact truly is on the students, on the community, and on the employees. So, I just want to close with, in the past, we had a Facilities Task Force to take care of all of this. Now, we have a Commission on School Utilization, and I've just found out how to make a circle more round. So, once again, I'm a man of peace, and I make these suggestions so that we will have peace. But we will not allow you to shut down our schools.
Thank you.
It's not just us.
Thank you.
It is the community-
Thank you, Mr. Brunson.
-that came and marched on your house.
Thank you.
Not us. It was the community.
Thank you, Mr. Brunson. We'll take your recommendations. You should take mine. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Our next speaker then will be Speaker number seven, please, Andrew Broy, followed by Speaker number eight, Patricia Breckenridge, followed by Speaker number 10, Teri Fitzpatrick, and then Speaker number 12, Benjamin Franklin.
Good morning. Andrew Broy from the Illinois Network of Charter Schools. My timing's appropriate, I think, coming after recent comments. Two points I'll make before my remarks. One is that charter schools do in fact have the right to organize unions. Ten of our member schools have unions currently with collective bargaining agreements between management and the teachers. Secondly, all charter budgets are required pursuant to the auto common state law to be filed with the State Board every year. We have that data. Happy to share it as well. Onto my remarks. Two points I want to address today. First, the state of the budget. Second, charter renewals, which are pending before the Board today. On the budget, I think it's apparent to everybody that we have a budget challenge in the district that is large, it's structural, and it's not going away. Part of the solution to that has to be meaningful pension reform in a way that reduces the $1 billion deficit to the tune of around $300 million or $400 million, I hope. This can be done, I think, through a coalition of entities working together to support meaningful pension reform in Springfield. There's a precedent for this. Just two years ago, pension reform was passed, not for CPS teachers, but rather for state employees newly hired, and I hope we can work together as a community to make sure that pension reform happens in the 2013 lame duck session before the session starts. That is what we need to get the system on firmer footing. Secondly, with regard to charter renewals, there are currently 12 charter contracts set to expire at the end of this current school year. What that means is those 12 charters operating roughly 30 campuses are up for renewal in the coming months. I'd like to state INX's position on this, the same as it's been for the past two years. We will support, when appropriate, actions on charter schools that aren't meeting their academic goals for students.
Mr. Broy, excuse me. Mr. Broy, excuse me. Can you please conclude?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
In fact, two years ago, the ACT charter was closed by this Board. We supported that decision, even though they were a dues-paying member of our organization, because INX is about better school options for students and appropriate academic growth. We want to see that happen, and therefore, if the decision is made later this year to take appropriate actions on charter schools, we will support that, because this isn't about membership. It's really about school quality for students. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Good morning, Mr. Vitale. Good morning, Barbara Bird Bennett. Welcome to Chicago. I hope you are our breath of fresh air, because we really do need you. Thank you for anticipating community involvement, because I think that's really what we need right now. I am an AFT delegate, and I have attached our resolution to the letter that I have here. You will find the American Federation of Teachers Education Issues Committee Resolution for Charter Schools, School Closings, and School Turnarounds. As an AFT delegate, I ask you to take AFT resolution into consideration before making any final decisions. The AFT supports call for moratorium on new charter schools, school closings and turnarounds, and for the return of charter schools to their original purpose. Originally, charter schools were intended to be educator-led and teacher-led schools, a two-line model of education, to remediate students' weaknesses and return them to the traditional neighborhood school setting. Instead, charter public schools have caused underutilization and underenrollment in traditional neighborhood public schools, while many charters are underperforming. Resolved that, the AFT will call on President Obama to affirm the original and appropriate purpose of charter schools. Not as an alternate or alternative model to replace district public schools, but as an educator-led incubators of innovations that can contribute significantly to a world-class public education for every student in our nation. Thank you for your time, and I pray that you will take teacher-led, unionized charters into consideration. Have a blessed day.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please, Teri Fitzpatrick. Last call for Teri Fitzpatrick.
Good morning.
I am Teri Fitzpatrick, the chairperson of the local school council at Tanner School, Tanner Elementary School. First of all, we, meaning myself, other members of the LSC, the Chair and Vice Chair of the NCLB, along with the dedicated parents of our school are here with me this morning. The first thing we would like to do is to thank the Board for the wonderful programs at Tanner School. Our after-school learning program, the upcoming Saturday enrichment program, and the extended day, which gives our children more learning time. We thank you for that. However, there's a big concern that we have as parents and community at the Tanner School. We're worried about the safety of our children. The issue is because of the shooting around the neighborhood, and not long ago, it's almost two years now, one of our neighbors and Chicago police officer was gunned down four doors from our school. And at the time that he was gunned down, the cameras were there, people from the mayor's office, and people from the Board of Education, they came, but no grief counselors were given to our children. We had to do that. Some of our children were actually afraid to go to school. No one ever came in and said, you know, they never called us and said, "We're going to send some grief counselors in so that they can talk to your children", because some of these children actually lived next door and two doors from Officer Bailey, who was gunned down.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick, excuse me. Mrs. Fitzpatrick, can you please conclude?
Yes.
Thank you.
What I'm saying is this: We don't have a fence so that our children can have security. There's no playground, and our children have been given recess now. So, we have to come out, and the parents, myself, extra teachers at the school, just to stand around where the fence would be to secure our children so that they can have recess. And I do want to say that today, I was approached by two people. Mr. Corey, I want to get his name right. Mr. Corey Davis. He came to me, and he said that he was unaware of this problem, and that as of today, we would no longer have to worry about the security of having a fence around the school, and they were going to give our children a playground. Now, we've been promised this before. This is not the first time. But he said that not under his leadership now, that he's responsible for doing this, and we believe him. He said by the spring of 2013, we will see this development for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fitzpatrick. Thanks for bringing it to our attention, and, you know, if they've made that promise, we'll make sure they keep it.
Thank you. Thanks again.
As the next speaker, purchase the microphone. Speaker number 12, Mr. Benjamin Franklin. The next speaker then will be Speaker number 13, Yvonne Brown, followed by the individuals that are here in support of the policy that is on agenda. And there are three designated speakers for the group, and that'll be Speaker number 15, Jamie Chakri, followed by Speaker number 32, Jose Hernandez, followed by Speaker number 34, Guillermo Gomez, please.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne Brown. I'm here to represent Chicago International Charter School Prairie Campus. I just wanted to come and tell you guys what a wonderful job is happening at our school and to highlight the positives that are going on. We serve 406 students in the Roseland community, where 95% of our students receive free and reduced lunch. My colleague, Mr. Franklin, is going to talk about some of the programs that we offer our students in after-school.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I've been with the school like 12 years, and I have a drill team, football team, talent show kids, praise dance. I have all of that after-school. I'd like to thank the foundation for giving me a chance to help the kids after-school. So, we strive for honor roll, success. So, I'd like to thank CPS for giving our students a chance to go into the flag football team and winning the championship. So, I'm just congratulating the kids that we did at the charter school, that they gave us an opportunity to show what we can do after-school program. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both for coming down. Appreciate it.
My name is Dr. Jamie Chakri. I'm a senior research scientist at the University of Illinois at Chicago, and I come before you today, I have over 20 years of experience doing public health policy research, including directing the largest nationwide evaluation of school district wellness, snack and beverage policies. I'm also a member of the Institute of Medicine Committee to Accelerate Progress in Obesity Prevention. I come before you today as you consider the snack and beverage policy that CPS has put forward. Although my funding precludes me from coming out with a position either for or against the policy, I want to let you know what my research has shown over the years about the impact that such policies could have on improving our school food and beverage environments and students intake and consumption and weight outcomes. Let me start by saying that districts and states nationwide have been successfully implementing school food and beverage policies like that proposed by CPS. At the elementary level, policies that place specific and required limits on sugars and fats in foods and beverages are associated with significantly less sweets, high-fat baked goods, ice cream and sugar sweetened beverages being sold in schools. And in districts nationwide, such as New York City, that prohibit the sale of 2% in whole milk, elementary schools are less likely to sell higher-fat milks. We've also found that elementary schools are two times more likely to restrict the sale of sugary foods and beverages during in-school fundraisers, and they're less likely to offer sugary items in class parties when policies preclude them from so-doing. At the secondary level, we found that beverage policies need to focus on a broad range of beverages and not just soda, because otherwise, kids will substitute soda for sugary drinks such as sports drinks and energy drinks that have as many calories, if not more calories, than regular soda. In terms of BMI, we found that students nationwide who have been exposed to strong snack policies in 5th grade gain on average .25 fewer BMI units by 8th grade, and are less likely to remain overweight or obese, and more likely to gain fewer BMI units over time if they were exposed to consistently strong laws between 5th and 8th grade.
Excuse me, Dr. Chakri. Can you please conclude? Thank you.
Absolutely. At the high school level, we found that students exposed to strong snack policies in California reported consuming 158 fewer calories per day, largely due to in-school reductions in intake. In summary, strong snack and beverage policies can improve the school food and beverage environment and student consumption intake and weight. I've illustrated for you a few examples of such policies that are being implemented nationwide and their impact, and that is why the Institute of Medicine Committee to Accelerate Progress in Obesity Prevention recommended that we adopt strong nutritional standards for all foods and beverages provided through our schools. Schools are only one part of our food and beverage environment, but kids spend the vast majority of their waking day, at least nine months a year, in school, so it's a logical place to start. Thank you very much. And I have remarks as well.
Susan. Susan. Thank you. Please.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Jose Hernandez. Good morning. My name is Jose Hernandez. I'm accompanied today by parents from different schools.
Speak just a little bit more into the microphone.
Yes. I'm accompanied today from my parents from different schools throughout the city of Chicago, and we're in support of the snack and beverage policy that's before you today. We feel that it's very important to pass this policy and then, well, also adapt Mr. Reese's suggestion also, that the local school councils individually at each school can also strengthen the policy as they see fit. The policy is flexible enough to allow all of the schools to have their own level of, you know, how much they want to limit the sweets and sugars at the schools. And then lastly, I want to thank you for adapting last month's policy also on the wellness. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Guillermo Gomez, Vice President of Healthy Schools Campaign. I also want to acknowledge Vice President Jesse Reese for his introduction of Healthy Schools Campaign's recommendations. We really thank you for that. Healthy Schools Campaign, Parents United for Healthy Schools, and many partner organizations commend CPS for its efforts to improve student health and wellness, for investing in its capacity to support student health. Today, you will be voting and updating the district's snack and beverage policy. You have an important opportunity to continue to support health and academic achievement. For the last two years, we have partnered with CPS around Go for the Gold in Food and Fitness, a district-wide effort to challenge and support schools to meet health and promoting standards of the Healthier U.S. School Challenge. During this time, hundreds of schools have successfully implemented school-based best practices that promote healthy eating and physical activity. They have figured out how to incorporate healthy classroom celebrations and healthy fundraising. We appreciate your willingness to consider our recommendations based on our experience working with schools. Your principals and teachers bring enormous creativity to creating healthy celebrations. One example, on Halloween, 6th grade students at Lincoln School created a wax museum when each student dressed up as a character from ancient Egypt, gave a monologue on their character to the younger students. Given the epidemic of childhood obesity and its consequences, the importance of this work cannot be overstated. Thank you for your leadership that CPS has shown in promoting the well-being for our students. We urge you to continue to provide strong leadership in this area, and we stand ready to continue to work with the district and your schools to help Chicago students grow up healthy and able to reach their full potential. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gilbert. Appreciate you all coming down and supporting the effort.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. And our next speaker then will be Speaker number 16, please, Sylvester Hendricks, followed by Speaker number 17, Daryl Bright, and then Speaker number 30, Lisa Kulasek, followed by Speaker number 19, Tiffany Blunston, and then Speaker number 20, Dwayne Trust, please.
I don't see Sylvester.
Last call for Sylvester Hendricks. Next speaker, please. Speaker number 17, Daryl Bright, followed by Speaker number 30, Lisa Kulasek.
My name is Daryl Bright. I'm a proud single parent of a nine-year-old at Spencer Technology Academy School in the Austin area. I recently graduated from Stanford Children as a Certified Parent Advocate, and I'm an active member of Stanford organization. I participate in many activities at my son's school because of my great interaction with the teacher and staff. My principal, Dr. Chanel Jackson, believed in me by giving me responsibility and specifically recruiting for CHICE, a Chicago pre-college science engineer program for parents with children K to 3. Mrs. O'Kay from Stanford Children visited Spencer and spoke about their concept and goal as they have for our children by helping empower the parents on education system. I recommend all parents join Stanford Children and get involved in children, because in order to pack our children, we have to empower our parents. I want to also inform you on the Stanford Children position on the school consolidation and school action. In two hours' serious leadership discussion, Stanford parents discuss our primary concern in school action. Decision is with the performance of school that students attend. Mrs. Bennett, with 123,000 students stuck in failing schools, we urge the school board to move ahead and open public schools that have a strong record of success, like top-performing magnet school, charter school, and turnaround school. We are calling CPS to emphasize that students should be transferred to a better-performing school. Mrs. CEO, Ms. Bennett, that means to Stanford parents, A, transition students to school with higher level on school report card, example, Level 2 or better.
Mr. Bright, excuse me. Can you please conclude?
Yes.
Thank you.
Two, if you're not possible, we would like CPS to invest in underperforming schools by choosing the school as a turnaround school, change the academical focus or magnet cluster not into report card within three years. C, approve and expand the charter school organization with a record of proven performance. Thank you for your time, Mr. Bright.
Thank you, Mr. Bright.
Hi. Wait. Make sure. Okay. No, no, I can't see. Sorry. Hi. My name is Lisa Kulasek. I'm the mother-
Excuse me. Could you move the microphone down and speak into it a little bit?
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
There. Okay. Hello. My name is Lisa Kulasek. I'm the mother of a CPS preschool student at the John M. Smith Elementary School. For the past year and a half, I've been trying to be an engaged and involved parent. I've been elected to the local school council, and I am Vice Chair. I have submitted my volunteer application, had my TB test, and volunteered on field trips. I'm a member of Stanford Children Illinois, and I've recently graduated from the same 10-week parent university program called Stand Up that teaches parents how to make sure that their children are on track to graduate from high school and ready to attend college. Our school's test scores are improving. We have a terrific IB curriculum, and the community is interested in engaging the school and investing in its success. But we are a Level 3 school and deemed underutilized. Despite my involvement, I feel that CPS does not do enough to facilitate parent participation. Tragically, the message that most parents hear is, "Don't cause trouble and don't complain about anything." This has got to change. Please ensure during the school action season that although you must focus on the students, you don't lose sight of the fact that parents are one of your most underappreciated, underestimated, and undervalued resources. If you look at the data on our school and only at bodies and seats, you will not see the whole picture. On the map that I've passed out, take a look at my school circled in yellow. Most of the students walk to school. Where would the children go if the school closed? The schools circled in blue are highly competitive, oversubscribed magnet schools. Lotteries, even with proximity lotteries that do not afford good odds, my daughter would have had a 1 in 11 chance of getting in if she were in last year's kindergarten lottery. The schools circled in red are Level 3, like ours, or do not include us in their neighborhood boundaries, like Perez, for instance.
Excuse me, Ms. Kulasek. Can you please conclude?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is not a small problem. It's a complex problem. The solutions should be equally complex. The inequities from school to school are currently shameful. You may not want to-
Recommended, but not mandated.
...equities, but they are urban planning actions, and they should provide students with better access to high qual-
Barbara, you know, the best kind of feedback is informed feedback.
Some parents can't afford bus fare-
...input for the system so that the decisions that are, you know, proposed eventually are ones that really include everyone's input.
Decisions, but please spend it visiting the neighborhood.
Hence, this is why I've created the Commission on School Utilization to assist us in fully-
Helping to solve the problems at hand. And please accept my invitation to visit our school and learn more. And please accept my invitation to visit our school and learn more. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kulasek. In case you're wondering, you need to sit here to know that the people who are telling parents not to come and talk to us, to know that they're not listening. You're the perfect example, and we welcome your engagement here. We welcome you coming, telling us how to think about this. And you should know that we all spend time in schools. I look forward to getting out to yours. You're in Ron Whitmore's school?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
So, we'll look forward to doing that. But I'd also invite you to engage in the process that Dr. Bird Bennett has initiated, you and anybody else to engage in that process, to make- ... us about this process. That's why we want to take the time, and we do want to hear from you. So, thank you for coming, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to note that Tiffany Blunston is not in the audience and will not speak. That was Speaker number 19. Our next speaker then will be Speaker number 20, please, Mr. Dwayne Trust. Also to note, Speaker number 23 is not present and will not speak. So then the next speaker after Mr. Trust will be Speaker number 25, Alexandra Genopoulos, followed by Speaker number 26, Clarice Mills, please.
Good morning, Board members. Welcome, Dr. Bird Bennett. And I want to thank Michael Redina, Linda Langston, and Pedro. Can I have his last name for the safety improvements over at our school? I'd like to thank them very much for the hard work with that. To you, Dr. Bird Bennett, I want to say this. It's not always what you say, but it's actually what you do. I am disappointed that the West Side of Chicago is underrepresented on your commission, especially the lack of West Side elected officials who know our schools and our community the best. And we do respect the work of Mr. Ernest Gates. But when it comes to the issue of school closing, there is no independent evidence has been presented to prove that consolidating and closing schools would have an academic or fiscal benefit to our children or to the district. We would be rigorously lobbying our state legislators to support no school actions this year because of CPS inability to comply with the state law on school actions. Extended the deadline to announce school actions to March 31st would then just invite chaos because there would be little or no time for principals to properly plan for a fall school year and hire teachers who are very good fit for their school, and plus the destabilization that would cause in our community and our families. One of the things that we need, that we ask and encourage you to look at, is look at the Austin model. Yesterday at our CAC meeting, it was announced that we have like three Level 1 schools, quality schools, per your definition, in the neighborhood because of hard, dedicated work. In our community, we have 11 of our schools off of probation. And when, you know, everybody throws this thing around about quality choice and quality schools, I don't hear that being celebrated in terms of the hard work of teachers, parents, and students in this community in Austin. Usually, we're first in the bad stuff and last in the good stuff, and in this situation, we've made the biggest improvement in the city of Chicago. One thing since Mr. Bird wanted to do some-
Miss Trust, excuse me.
I got you, I got you, I got you.
Thank you.
That he wanted to correct some things on. One thing I want to say to him, he talked about, he supported ACT closing. ACT never closed. Their charter was voluntarily suspended. And then the action of last year was the fact that KIP, which is a Level 3 performing school, yes, I would keep bringing that up, was allowed to manage their building. So when, you know, you get parents coming up here saying, "Transition kids into a quality school or turnaround model," I mean, I heard, I saw the announcement about these hearings on charter schools and whether to revoke their charters. But with a school like KIP, I would literally grow a half roe because I can't grow a full afro. If you were to go ahead and revoke their charter, especially after you spent all that money on Lathrop School and give them that building, and then you spent all that money at the Nash School, because it's the situation like that when you say, "Well, we want to engage the community," but at the same time, you hear the rhetoric about, "We want to talk tough about getting tough with charter schools," but because of that significant investment you made-
Miss Trust, our next speaker, please.
I can't see that happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker then is Speaker number 25, please, Alexandra Genopoulos, followed by Speaker 26, Clarice Mills. And then the next group of speakers, Speaker 27 and 40, decided that the designated speaker will be number 40, Shawn Mead.
Good morning, Board members. First, I would like to thank you for this opportunity to speak at this board meeting, and thank you in advance for listening. I am Alexandra Genopoulos, a member of the MiFIA Challenge Education Council. As you may know, MiFIA Challenge promotes and develops the next generation of civic leaders, activists, and policymakers in Chicago. The Education Council specifically creates policy recommendations to improve Chicago public schools. We also meet with stakeholders within CPS to push for the implementation of those recommendations. With this in mind, this past summer, another Education Council member, Larice Johnson, spoke and stated that the council would conduct research on the best innovative strategies to create a positive and rigorous school culture. Today, I am here to present you to our final product, a principal guide compiled of tips for principals to help create a positive and rigorous school culture. We believe in youth voice in education because youth experience firsthand what is really happening in schools, and our expertise gives unique insight into solving problems. Over the summer, the Education Council conducted research from various CPS schools and surveyed students on principles and ways to improve school culture. As a group, we identified five essential elements on successful schools to help guide our research and create our tips: supportive staff and administration, motivated students, rigorous classes, safety and discipline, and student involvement. Due to all our research, a guidebook for principals was created, and I would like to present it to you now. CEO Barbara Bird Bennett. I would also like to use this time to ask for a meeting with you so we can present this guidebook to you personally. We have had successful relationships and positive outcomes from meetings with past CEOs and hope to continue this with you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alexandra, and thank you for your work. It's very interesting.
Thank you. As the next speaker approaches, then our next speaker will be Speaker number 40, Shawn Mead. I'd like to note that Leslie Reck is no longer in the audience and will not speak. We will then be followed by Speaker number 29, Sabrina Childress, followed by Speaker number 36, please, Sandra Stone.
Good morning, well, good afternoon, Board members. My name is Clarice Mills, and I am the founder and Board President of Teach and Equip Young Women Through Social Awareness and Mature Ethics and Values, more known as TEAM Incorporated MFP. TEAM is a community-based organization in the West Chatham community. For the past 10 years, we have been providing community services such as mentoring, academic assistance, tutoring to youth 6 to 18 years of age. I am currently here because TEAM has developed and instituted a new program called the TEAM Interactive Gaming Program. Our new program is currently operating in several underserved communities on the South and West Sides. The objective of the TEAM Interactive Gaming Program is to use interactive gaming technology to engage pre-teens ages 6 to 12 in the development of positive and social competitive skills. Skills to be developed are teamwork, sportsmanship, problem-solving, and the ability to formulate strategies. TEAM would like to conduct this program in the Chicago public schools as either an after-school program or as an activity program for trucky schools during their breaks. TEAM recognizes that many of our elementary school children have been prohibited from-
Excuse me, Ms. Mills. Excuse me, Ms. Mills, can you please conclude?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
They have been prohibited from regular outdoor physical activity due to constant gang violence and drug activities and fear for their safety. The TEAM Interactive Gaming Program will allow students to participate in a variety of competitive activities within the safety of their designated schools. On behalf of the TEAM organization, I'd like to thank the Board for allowing me to come here today. We have submitted handouts that provide additional information regarding our program. Thank you.
Thank you for your interest in working with our kids, Ms. Mills. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Our next speaker then, please, Speaker number 40, Shawn Mead.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
My name is Shawn Mead. I'm a special ed teacher at Kelvin Park High School. I'm speaking on behalf of the entire special ed department about the following policies which are harming our special ed students. Number one, inappropriate programming of student schedules. Kelvin Park's special ed students continue to be negatively affected by inappropriate and excessive number of program changes experienced thus far this year. For example, special ed students were frequently placed in inappropriate classes for the first quarter of the school year. Some still are improperly placed. Appropriate schedules for special ed students, for special ed teachers, were not available when we reported to school on August 27th. Schedules have been changed several times during the first quarter. There are still significant mismatches between students, classes, teachers, and IEP requirements. Special ed students began the school year in restrictive environments due to inappropriate program, programming, and violation of the federal least restrictive environment requirements. For example, students with severe disabilities were inappropriately placed in general ed classes without appropriate services. And special ed students were inappropriately placed, for example, in English as a second language class. The excessive number of schedule changes has made evaluation and grading of students difficult or impossible, negatively impacting delivery of services. Number two, the lack of teachers. Over a dozen small special ed and inclusion classes had no permanent teacher for up to two months. Several classes still have no qualified special ed teacher. This lack of qualified special ed teachers impacts the delivery of special education services, making it difficult or impossible to evaluate progress and develop appropriate interventions for classroom teachers to ensure student success.
Mr. Mead, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yes, I'm wrapping it up.
Thank you.
As well as difficult or impossible to write meaningful, individualized goals for students. The lack of qualified special ed teachers delivering required services to special ed students is also illegal, unethical, and invites legitimate lawsuits demanding compensatory services. Number three, the burden imposed on special ed department leaders. In regard to our special ed department chair, instead of hiring special ed teachers, the Kelvin Park Special Ed Department Chair is now covering classes where no teacher has been assigned, contrary to guarantee of adequate planning time. The chair is now teaching six classes. In regard to our special ed case manager, the Kelvin Park Special Ed Case Manager is a full-time job, but has been assigned three classes to teach in addition to setting up meetings and notifying participants, processing all special ed meeting paperwork, presiding over all IEP meetings, as well as taking the lead on contentious manifestation meetings. We are asking the Board's assistance to remedy these policies that are harming the education of our most vulnerable and needy students. Thank you. I have the full support of all of our special ed teachers have signed. As I said, I'm speaking for the entire department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mead, and I'll ask Dr. Bird Bennett to look into this, and I will follow up with her to make sure that I understand what the issues are. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speaker then is Speaker number 29, Sabrina Childress, followed by Speaker number 36, Sandra Stone, followed by Speaker number 42, Wendy Catton, then Speaker number 43, Scott McMorro, and the last speaker will be Speaker number 44, Maxine Gladney.
That smile just made my heart stop racing. Greetings to you all. My name is Sabrina Childress. I'm the Executive Director of Position of Pressure NFP. We are a domestic violence and violence prevention organization grassroots in Chicago, and we've been offering our services to schools recently, over the last maybe three or four years, through a partnership with Northeastern Illinois University. The violence in our schools, I know a lot of people have talked about it, but what we do is, we're small, but we're effective. We not only offer domestic violence counseling, training, that type of thing, but we also offer communication, violence prevention, intervention, sorry, I'm going to put this up here, social skills, sex ed off-site, as well as interactive career development workshop, which I've provided you all handouts with a little more information about what those items are. But more specifically, I'm here to address President Vitale and CEO Bennett because what you said today was dead on. In your task force or communication committee that you're pulling together, what I want to urge you to do is just remember not just the faith-based organizations, but the small grassroots organizations. Because while, yes, you're CPS and you want to pull kids into school, I deal directly with those kids who are not going to school, and I find alternative ways for them to get their education. So whether that's GV, another college program, or whatever the situation is, you need to reach them. And the only way to reach them, if they don't go to church, or if they're not, you know, at the community park, I'm the person that has over 1,000 kids on our Facebook page inboxing us every day-
Ms. Childress, excuse me, please conclude.
Yes.
Thank you.
About homework and things of that nature. So I just, that information is in the packet. I also want to say that we have Presidential Management Fellow Levon Thomas, who is 100% behind us as far as speaking to kids, letting them know that you can come from a terrible background and make it to, you know, the White House and other very important positions in life. And I'll conclude by saying this, our results, because I know it's about results, three out of five of the kids that we serve do alter or change their reactions to different situations, no matter what they, what happened that morning, or whether they ate, or whatever the situation is. Four out of five improve academically, and we set expectations. We also combine CPS's model of service learning-
Ms. Childress, our next speaker, please.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. We combine service learning with, I know this is a CPS requirement for high school students. We combine that by them helping through our organization and helping other organizations. So again, my information's there, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
And if you have any questions-
Thank you for making us aware of your services. I'm sure we'll try to take advantage of them. I'm sure the district will reach out. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. Childress, don't go away, please. My Chief of Staff for Academics is going to meet you. We really want to get your information and partner with you with this most important work.
Okay, thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speaker then will be Speaker number 36, please, Sandra Rae Stone.
Hello, I came here today to explain how people are feeling, head start teachers, preschool teachers, parents of children in preschools right now because we don't know what's happening with our preschools and head starts because of the $80 million that we're no longer receiving in school funds. I wanted to explain to you the legacy of head starts at preschools here in Chicago, Illinois. Its legacy starts in the 70s, 60s, late 60s, 70s, on the South Side of Chicago out of the Civil Rights Movement. In the, it came into the schools in the 80s. It left the schools because of Reaganomics. In the 90s, Illinois was one of three states to pioneer state-funded preschools. We also, we also determined what was happening in the universities because they created those early childhood masters and bachelors for us. I wanted to bring it to your attention that your staff, your educators that are early childhood educators are some of your most highly educated staff. We've taken a lot of training, we've taken a lot of endorsements, a lot of courses, a lot of degrees. In the 2000, it was brought, head starts were brought back into the public school system, and they were quite damaged. Barbara Bowman rescued them, nursed them back to health, modernized them, gave us our technical component so that we could do our assessments and create our curriculum and our record-keeping online.
Excuse me, Ms. Stone, can you please conclude?
I would like to bring it to your attention that this program is from the people, by the people, and of the people. It is a public school program, and we would like you to protect it because it is a high-quality program. It's one of the top models in the nation, and our children are benefiting from, benefiting from it, and we are concerned of if they go into community schools, for example.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. Our next speaker-
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker then is Speaker number 42, please, Wendy Catton, followed by Speaker 43, Scott McMorro, and then last speaker, Maxine Gladney.
Good afternoon and welcome, Dr. Bird Bennett. I'm Wendy Catton. I'm part of a group called Raise Your Hand. It's a parent coalition across the district working on our schools. So today, I wanted to present a data chart that we put together. I'd like to leave it for you, and I'm sorry I didn't make a copy for the Board members, but we have a list here of every CPS school class size limits, and I just want to report that 357 of our elementary schools have class sizes over the CPS recommended limits of 28 and 31. So that's- of twenty-eight and thirty-one. So that's seventy-six percent of our, of our schools are over, have rooms that are overcrowded within a building. And we just wanted to bring that to the Board's attention because in this, you know, time, this narrative of underutilization, we think it's important to note that most of our classrooms are overcrowded. And we hope that there's a balanced discussion and a true inventory of what's happening in every single school before decisions are made around consolidations. In addition to that, we're setting up a class size hotline for parents to help them advocate on this issue. We found that LSC chairs don't even know that an LSC rep is now supposed to be part of a class size committee when a school makes a complaint about class size. There's apparently a committee that has CPS and the CTU and now, I believe, a parent LSC member.
Excuse me, Ms. Catton, can you please conclude?
But LSC chairs that I've met with this weekend, they don't even know this exists. So I believe there's a problem with information sharing on this topic, and we hope that when you make very high-stakes decisions about our schools, not one single classroom will be further negatively impacted by class sizes that are larger than we have right now, as you'll see on that chart in three hundred and fifty-seven of our elementary schools. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Scott McMorro. Last call for Scott McMorro. Finally, Speaker number forty-four, please, Maxine Gladney. Last call for Maxine Gladney. Mr. President, that concludes public participation.
Well, thank you all. Thank you all for coming and speaking to us. We appreciate the efforts that people make. Hopefully, we're making it easier for people to engage us. At this juncture, I'd like to offer the opportunity, Board members, to ask questions or make comments about what they've heard or ask any questions regarding items on the open agenda. Henry.
So, Mr. Munson is not here and I don't know whether Ms. Breckenridge from the AFT is here. But I was interested that in their comments on utilization, they, they didn't question underutilization in a significant number of schools, but they raised the issue of why, why open charters at a time when you're closing neighborhood schools. Ms. Breckenridge is here. Thank you. So the point that I, and I think we're going to hear this a lot. And, and it's a fair question, by the way, but the answer lies in the fact that there's a waiting list for charter schools. And that parents and students have voted with their feet. I'm not aware of anybody forcing anybody else into a charter school. So if one looks at what has been happening in Chicago and in many other places, there has been a growth of charter schools precisely because many parents and students have felt that they're not adequately served by neighborhood schools. And that's simply a fact. It can be wished away or hoped away by some who don't like it, but it remains a fact. And I think we need to make this point very strongly. Finally, Ms. Catton has just talked about overutilization and that there are large numbers of classrooms that have too many students in it, in them. I don't know that there are three hundred odd elementary schools, of which that's true, but I do know that there are schools that, in fact, have overcapacity rather than undercapacity, and they have to be dealt with. And that's a really important point for us to consider when we look at utilization as a whole, and I think we will. We have to and we will. What you have in Chicago is a geographic unevenness by neighborhood and by areas of the city, which leads to this kind of not smooth quilt, if you like, of underutilization where population has been leaving, or certainly school-age population has been leaving. And in other areas where people are moving in to different neighborhoods where you have overcapacity. That can happen at the same time in a large metropolitan city like Chicago.
Thank you, Henry. Andy.
A couple of points. First, you know, I was encouraged to see a number of parents here today and, and members of the community. And I hope, as you noted, that we continue to get that feedback and that anyone who would suggest that we're not interested in the feedback from the stakeholders and in particular the parents is putting out misinformation. I would note, and, and, Dr. Bennett, Dr. Bird Bennett, this really goes to you, to the point I raised earlier. There is also a lot of misinformation and factual inaccuracy being out there. So that really makes it so much, and so important that, that we as the district, the Board, get and the district get the information out, the correct factual information out, upon which we, you and the Commission will be making recommendations. Because we heard a lot of information today, much of which was factually inaccurate. And so I just wanted to make that point. And then the last point is, I just think it's important to, well, two things. One, on the moratorium issue, I think the answer to say to us, stop, don't do anything, is just not helpful. And I'm truly disappointed that the AFT's suggestion to us that we do nothing and, and wait for some unspecified period of time is not productive, doesn't help us, doesn't, doesn't kick the can down the road for these kids. It's just not acceptable. And I don't see that happening. And then thirdly, I just have to touch on what you talked about earlier, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Brunson on the behavior of the CTU. And for him to come in here and suggest to us that he talks peace when they literally threatened and made misrepresent, threatened us particularly and personally, and then made very misrepresentations about Ms. Pritzker, undercuts, we can't, we try to proceed. We want to listen to them, but it's hard to engage when someone suggests to you that their mode of operation will be, if you just dare to disagree with them, that their mode of, or as he said, dare to close a school, I think he said, we will not let you close our schools. If you dare to think about that, they will personally attack you, is not a groundwork for partnership, communication, or really working together, which they have otherwise suggested they want to do. So I think the CTU needs to pick. We want to work together. We need to work together. For our kids, it's critically important that we work together. And, but threats and intimidation are not acceptable and will not work.
And yes, that's the main point. They're not going to work and nobody is going to be intimidated by such nonsense.
Other comments, questions? Thank you. Thank you, Andy. Thank you. Henry. With that, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session, Andy.
I have a motion. In my, my speechiness, I lost it. So, give me a minute and I'll see if I can locate. Oh, they're bringing it again. Thank you.
I move for passage of motion, motion number one-two-one-one-one-four-MO-one, and the commencement of a closed session to consider the subject specified in the motion.
Seconded.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll proceed with the call. Dr. Beenan?
Aye.
Vice President Reese?
Aye.
Ms. Pritzker?
Aye.
Ms. Sapp?
Aye.
President Vitale?
Aye.
Five ayes, zero nays.
Moving to closed session. Thank you.